It says, "Motion by Councilperson Joe Doosing, seconded by myself, to get the council's endorsement to send us the second letter to the Attorney General's office and the vote was descended."
It doesn't say for who. Do you send it?
No.
So Megan, if you want to just, we can just change and take Pete's name off of it and just send it on behalf of the city of Kryptonian. That's who sent the letter. And then, just, we need to change the date. Instead of August 16th, just date it till August 2nd.
So who's going to sign it?
I'm happy to sign it.
You will sign it?
I'm happy to sign it. I mean, you guys have, you've directed, I mean, it's our job to file our own ordinances. Well, actually, it's a resolution, I believe. We should have had a resolution authorizing it, not an ordinance. So, I'll do it. Megan, if you give it to me, I can endorse it.
We don't have a resolution on it.
It should have been a resolution. It should have been done via a resolution, not an ordinance. It's a resolution, so...
Well, we don't have a P E anymore, so you're...
We just need to clean it up through a resolution. That's how you, you, you take measures and formally, how you act is through a resolution, right? So you would need to do a resolution, so you make the motion, second it, or a resolution, redirecting, and send it.
Okay. And this was the wording that we voted on?
Right, I'm not going to change the thing. Just change the heading.
Thank you.
We got, go ahead.
Oh, do we have to, motion again?
Yeah, so we're going to motion for the adoption of the resolution.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution to send this same letter, wording of this same letter to the Attorney General. We get an opinion on those items.
The August 16th, reflecting the August 16th, 2019 letter.
Yep, that's what I said.
Second it.
So I have a motion on the floor by Jennifer, seconded by Danny, to adopt a resolution to send the August the 16th letter to the Office of the Attorney General. Is that correct?
Does that sound good, Alex?
It sounds like what she moved. And you seconded, so now it's a roll.
Okay, roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Paula?
No.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And then Joe is absent, and Erlene is absent.
Ann, could we find out why?
It wasn't sent.
It was sent at the beginning of last year.
I'd like to know that, too, because we voted to do that. I mean, that's what we paid the person for.
I don't think there was any malice, certainly. I just don't think it happened. I think he resigned effectively maybe the 15th of September. I think that's what it is, if I recall. But I'm happy to, I'm happy to fix it and get it done. So that's my commitment. I'll make sure.
Can we let the public know what this letter is?
Absolutely. Do you want me to read it?
No, you don't have to read everything, but just let them know what is being said today.
Well, I think we could just read the whole thing.
I don't know, just the one through six, pretty much.
You will read it?
Sure. Just to summarize, we're, it's basically a question and answer to find out for future need what, what you can and can't do. There's six questions to start off. Number one is, are the offices of Mayor and ABC Administrator incompatible under any set of circumstances? Number two is, what is the interplay between KRS 61.080 and KRS 241.160 as to the issue of compatibility? I do not have either one of those KRSs in front of me, so I can't read that, too. Number three is, does taking the prescribed oath have any effect on the compatibility of the Office of Mayor and ABC Administrator? Number four, does the receipt of compensation for performing the duties of the Office of ABC Administrator by a mayor have any effect on the compatibility of the two offices? Number five, in the event the two offices are deemed incompatible, are the provisions of KRS 61.090 triggered insofar as the acceptance by one in an office of another office for employment incompatible with the one he holds, shall operate to vacate the first? Number six, in the event an individual serving as ABC Administrator has not been sworn, what effect does the lack of the prescribed oath have on said person's authority and/or validity of any actions they have taken? That's all the questions that need clarity from the Attorney General.
KRS 61.080 says, "No person shall at the same time fill two municipal offices either in the same or different municipalities." And 241 is about that. ABC... Now, Alex, you might know that off the top of your head.
No.
We can come back to that. Danny, you had some question about the trash and recycled bin?
Uh, yes. A lot of people use that, and of course, some people use it for things that they're not supposed to. I'm proud that we've got more cameras going on, especially the camera in the lobby. I think that's neat. I'm glad that the cameras got put up in the Grant County Park, which is in Kryptonian, but we don't have anything to do with the, actually, no city employees have anything to do with the Grant County Park. I'd like to know if there's any way that a camera could be put up, where we can get this recycle bin back in it monitored by possibly the police, like the park is monitored, where we can get that, because the recycling is supposed to be gray and green and all this other good stuff, and I use it, and I know a lot of people use it, but I will tell you this, a lot of people started dumping more stuff when they started getting fines from the code enforcement, because they had to get rid of their stuff. No, it's not the code enforcement's fault. They should have taken care of the trash themselves, but they just started dumping. So if anybody has any ideas of how we can get that recycle center or container back down there, in a means of way to video, record, or anything like that, when we get our, when we get our access channel, it's like a Dry Ridge, you turn it on and it goes picture by picture. But people know that those cameras are going on, I bet you they're going to be less likely to do something they shouldn't be doing. Just a thought, if anybody else has anything else.
I spoke with Tom, and he advised that Charles is not buying it, and he's having to pay for all this contamination to be recycled. And it's, we try, you know, he's been trying to get it corrected, and it's not being corrected. If there's any place other than there that we could maybe possibly put the container...
And it used to be here?
I don't think so.
Megan, did it used to be behind the city building or in the Dollar General lot?
It was here before this building was over here, and then they took it out because it was being contaminated.
Does anybody have any other cities? Mayor, or you have any problem in Dry Ridge with people dumping stuff that they shouldn't be dumping in the recycle bins?
They haven't said anything yet.
Well, they put a sign up out there that you can go to Dry Ridge to put your recycle in, and, but, I mean, I can talk to Tom. If you have any suggestions of a different location. They're, they're just tired of having to pick up the couches, all the junk that's being put in that container, and they're having to pay for it, and frankly, I don't believe...
I don't blame them.
Counsel one, please. Ms. Yurin.
Yeah, I found the other ordinance, or the other KRS, 241.160. The wet or moist cities with a population of 3,000 or more, or consolidated local governments required to have city administrators. City administrators are permitted in smaller cities, and I think this is the one that applies to us. Number one, the legislative body of any wet or moist city with a population equal to or greater than 3,000, or a consolidated local government, shall by ordinance create the Office of City ABC Administrator, or shall assign the duties of this office to a presently established city office.
In new business, we had Joe McGurk, who was supposed to be here tonight. He's not here. And he was with the Veterans Bandits, placing them in town, and still, it's still up, I guess, how many that we had that were to be involved with that? We had several people call and would like to have that happen. I can give Joe a call, something why I came up, because he couldn't be here tonight. But we will still address that in this one. I know he was one. Next, on new business, the law enforcement report. Chair, please.
I have emailed that to Megan. They finally got it to me on my way here, actually. They sent it a couple times and it wouldn't open, but there was 354 police responses within the city limits of Kryptonian. And when you all take a look at it, you'll see the calls went down a little bit. That happens every year when school comes back in, things slow down just a little. As far as staffing, we've lost another deputy. He didn't go to another agency. He got totally out of law enforcement. He was one of the newer ones. The good news is, we were already in a hiring process. The bad news with the hiring process is we only received 18 applications that were suitable. We scheduled them for the physical agility test. Of that 18, only nine showed up, and of that nine, only six passed. So, we're going to start interviews probably next week, and then we're going to have to send those through the academy. But it's, for those of you all that may not keep up with it, it's a nationwide thing right now with law enforcement. I mean, it's Boone County, they're paying $60,000 a year, and they've got 12 slots open right now, begging for people to work. It's everywhere. We're doing our best, and we've put some standards in place. We're used to, when we hire, we just hire as long as you have a high school education and no felonies or criminal past. We've started the physical agility and a written testing phase, and we're putting together an interview board made up of supervisors and deputies, so that, you know, they can choose the best candidate for the job. That's kind of where we're at right now. Hoping to have two or three people in the academy who wants to help. Any of y'all have anything for me? Questions, conservatives?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Chief Burton?
Hi, folks. Mayor, these are going to be the runs for August. I was not able to get September blotter report yet. Today is the first. And I'll get those to you before the caucus meeting. And I wanted to apologize for my appearance. I wanted to come in in uniform and stuff. Unfortunately, it's been one heck of a crazy day. We've been running all over the place, so, again, I'm not slight by not dressing appropriately. As you see, runs before you are for August. We'll have September send us the blotter report, council post. We have, we've been overlapping with the EMS service that's running, and boys have been busy. The guys have been, guys and girls, excuse me, good grief, have been extremely busy. The ambulance in the city is making one heck of a difference on call volume and on response times, and we've received quite a few comments on it already. We've had some serious calls. There's been a couple of structure fires. There was a fire that we assisted Dry Ridge with on Main Street, Dry Ridge Auto Parts. We've also been to Walton to assist them on the structure fire on Green Road. So, the month has been quite hectic. I would like to point out, and hopefully this makes it to as many people as possible, but the judge has signed a no burn ban. That's any type of burn. So even if it's in a barrel or whatever, if you're burning, you're going to get somebody showing up and telling you to put it out. We are in extreme dry conditions. We do not have a forecast for any substantial rain that will give any easement of the drought for at least another week plus. Hopefully, we're, October is our month that we're also starting our membership drive, trying to get new personnel in. And I do want to take this opportunity to say that when these people are put on, we do have to do background checks on them. We do references. We call every reference that they have, because like Brian stated, the days that somebody's walking in, shaking your hand, suddenly they're a member, gone. We have to have accountability for everybody that we put on. Then they also have to go through what we call our academy. It's a state-required, uh, state-required program that we bring them up to speed on what our department does, what we have, what our rules and regulations are, and that's even before they start their state training. So it is a laborious process at best. We'll get between 20 and 40 applicants. When we call them, we may get 15 to 20 that show up. And out of that 15 to 20, when they find out that there's really work, that it's not just yee-haw fun, we may end up with five. Another problem I wanted to point out is that there have been several times that people have asked me, "Why are so-and-so persons at the station, but they did not respond in the trucks?" You cannot drive those vehicles per state regulation until you have a state-approved, what's called EVO, Emergency Vehicle Operators Class. That is taught by the State Fire Commission and the Kentucky College Technical, KCTCS. Bunch of letters to say the state. We have to schedule that. They tell us when they can do the class, and then we have to hope that the guys and girls that are doing their jobs can take off to take it. It's eight hours of classroom, eight hours of road, and code course. Then, they can start driving the vehicles. No lights, no sirens. Because our insurance also requires they have 10 contacts per vehicle. So it's not just the fact that me saying, "I like you, you can drive. I don't like you, you drive a walk." There is a long process on it. It's enough to where I'm pulling my hair out. Believe me, I haven't got enough to really do that a whole lot. But we're doing the best we can.
So they have 10 hours training before they can...
They have to have the eight hours in classroom. Then they have to do a road course, come course, and then the insurance requires they have 10 contacts. That might be driving the vehicle to go get fuel, but you have to have an instructor or a field training officer in the vehicle with them.
Per vehicle, per apparatus?
Apparates. And even though we've got two engines that are fairly close in make and model, it has to be 10 per engine because of the handling characteristics of each vehicle. They're different. So, it is a process. Also, last thing, we're inviting everybody to our Halloween festival, Halloweene. We're hoping this year, hey, everybody laughs, but it's a fun name, and we have a blast. We're going to try this year to give out 750 hot dogs. We did 500 last year. We added out enough candy to make a dentist nervous, and it's a hoot and holler. It is fun. Kids all over the trucks. We get to explain a lot of stuff to family members. We're really pushing smoke detectors and home evacuation plans. We are now getting almost to the crisis stage again in residences, not having smoke detectors or not having them operational. And it's really disturbing, all these years it was pushed, and now it seems to have gone by the wayside. So this is a good way for us to get in touch with people and let them know, hey, you know, we've still got some work to do. Any questions?
When is the Halloween...
Halloween night, whenever the board decides to designate Halloween, then we set everything up, we grill hot dogs, we put on costumes, and have a lot of fun. And anybody who wants to participate, any organization, any business, we welcome you, and we'll set up an area for you and make sure that we get you electricity and whatever else you need.
Sounds fun.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Next, on new business, Ms. Dawn and I had, went to a chamber with Jamie Baker-Nance and other leaders of the community. There is going to be a Grant County bicentennial this year, year 200, I think, their bicentennial. They was asking if city council wanted to approve possibly having a day at the Kryptonian Park, at the Grant County Park for the city of Kryptonian. Williamstown's going to have a day. Dry Ridge, I believe, I'm not for sure. Mayor Brockman, if you guys are going to have a day for the county. It is the county bicentennial, but their request is if city council wants to have something at, at the park for, for that day. Also, the city would be funding for that.
Is she asking for any certain thing for us to do?
All of it, for that particular day. Vendors, you know, coming in, they can, you know, pay so much for setting up. The music would be paid by the city. In turn, we could get some money back from the vendors to compensate. I don't know how much it's going to be. I just know we have another meeting coming up. We have to let them know, Jamie and Judge Executive and so forth, if Kryptonian wants to be a part of that.
Is there a date?
September 19th was the day that they're looking at for 2020. It's next year, 2020, is the $2000, the bicentennial.
Are you thinking about putting together a committee, or...
Yes, yes. We're going to have a committee for that. It's going to be more than two, three people can handle that, so...
That might fall under what I added into the new business to discuss.
Okay, go ahead with that.
Actually, before I even know about that, I've talked to some of the residents, and I've talked to different people in different areas about setting up a city events and entertainment committee, board, however you want to go with committee, on, at least in the spring, summer, fall times, at least once a month, have something, either at the park or somewhere in the city. Have some kind of family resident event. I don't think once a month is going to be a bank breaker or too much, but I think we need to have more family-oriented something. And I'm posing, I'd like to set up a committee and get back to council, probably by next month's meeting, on just a outlook of what we can do, what we want to do.
Then you might get with Jamie Baker and Matty Gutman, the parks director. She'd be somebody to help us to work with on that, too.
That's a great idea.
And I need to, I need to let Jamie know that if council approves in the budget for this bicentennial day, it's up to you guys.
How much money are we looking at?
I have no clue.
I think we definitely would probably want to do it. I think we'd have to look at maybe a proposal as to what we want to do and...
How much we want to spend?
How much we want to spend, as to, you know, depending on what, what we're going to do, and then we could set a budget. We could look at that proposal and then set a budget as to what we think we can afford.
When's that next meeting you're all having with Jamie Baker?
Sometime this month, maybe. I don't know where I'm at.
I'm told that, I'm told that the other cities are also looking into having businesses step up and help with those costs, so maybe it wouldn't all have to come out of the city budget.
I'm sure we could sponsor it.
If you've got vendors that would pay so much to be there, that would, that would compensate for a lot of, like, if you had to pay a little bit for... Jamie just advised maybe bluegrass gospel music, you know, at the theater there, and then have different activities for the children, and then have the vendor set up, maybe crafts and food and so forth like that. What I could do is, once I, I get the, I have the date, but I don't have, I don't want to give you the wrong date, I can send out an email to, to all council.
Maybe it's not till next year?
Well, there's another meeting coming up. They're planning on it now, so we don't rush, you know, we get to next year in September, and we're not ready, so there's another meeting coming up, and I can send you that date of when that is, if anybody wants to show up on council or whoever wants to be involved.
I think we definitely tell her that we want to participate and support that, but I don't know if we can commit to a dollar right now.
Well, okay. I think, I think that's fair enough. And also, if you want to be a part of that, organizing that and help, help getting that together, I recommend, you know, coming to that meeting, because it's going, you know, like I said, it's going to take several to get that together. Any other discussion on that? At this time, we have some questions to amend the budget in regards to our financial report and annual budget for the fiscal year. Now, let me explain with the Oakwood project, how that works. It wasn't a grant, it was a discretionary fund. And the city, what, what happens is the city takes care of that street and the project, and then we send them an invoice, and they send that back to the city of $121,000. Now, we projected that a little bit higher, because we don't want to get into the project, and then it costs more than the $121,000. So in the, in this budget, Ms. Megan, if I were with you, we are projecting a little bit higher than $121,000, just so we don't run into anything that we have to amend the budget again, because every time we amend the budget, we have to pay the paper more money to put that in there. Megan, you want to go ahead and explain to the head?
Yes.
So, so let me ask a question here. Are we amending the budget before we know what the scope of the project is?
We have the scope of around $122,000 from Art Harden, the engineer, but also, as Joe had came up with his predict, you know, of the project, he came up with $145,000. So we're, we want to amend the budget to $135,000, just in case we run into something that's not going to be surprising. But the state is going to reimburse back that $121,000 total.
Do we have to amend the budget before we get bids? Because a bid could come in lower, couldn't it? That's what happened before when we amended the budget.
Well, I would, I would rather amend the budget now, so we can be ready with this project to go ahead and get started. If we wait another month, and, and, you know, we're going to have to get another reading on this, and we're talking two months, and we want to go ahead and get this project started. Art Harden is working on getting this finalized for the... Art Harden is working on getting this finalized for the fourth, so we can get those bids in. If we prolong it, we prolong it another month.
Oh, I don't want to prolong it. I just want to do it correctly. So when are you, when are you thinking about letting bids?
Let's, let's get through this first. Go ahead, Megan.
Okay, I have ordinance number 279, 2019.
Do you have a copy of it?
That's all I got. And it's, uh, ordinance 279, 2019, an ordinance relating to the annual budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Whereas the city of Crittenden must adopt an ordinance amending the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. It is ordained by the city council of Crittenden that amends the budget for the city of Crittenden for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. That should be '20. It is ordained by the, I copied that twice. But the first reading would be tonight, October 1st, 2019. Where you will see the amendment to the budget will be on the first page. There's an amendment for, uh, to general government and one for public works. Public works was increased by 135,000. That was for the anticipation of Oakwood Drive. On page three, you'll see an increase on administrative fees. We increased that because if you look at, um, the breakdown of this page where you proposed the salaries, I went back and added those up, and the clerks and the maintenance were figured incorrectly. Then I also had to add in for time for Donna to do taxes. Plus, I'm going to have to have a surgery, so I'm going to have to be off for that. So we just bumped it up by $4,200 to make it 148, 795. We increased the office expense by $1,000 because that was the increase for cameras. We increased beautification by $2,000 in case we need money for the bicentennial. And the equipment purchases, Fred put together a proposal. I think we spent about 2,500 on the laptops, or it's 2,000 something. So his proposal for a new PC for the city clerk was going to be about 4,500. So that was the, um, those were the only budget amendments that we were doing.
And why didn't we get this up for tonight? This is a significant budget amendment.
It is, and because we didn't know for sure how would the governor come in to make that presentation, you know. I thought we'd get a check, and we didn't. But, and that's the way that goes, but, um, they explained to us that this is how, this is how that, that project will be done.